Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board on June 21st to order by roll call.
Newman present.
Cranston present. That's it, Mr. Smith will not be here this evening. And if you would all, all four or five of you join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and Kirsten, did you have a chance to read our minutes?
I did, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes, June 7th, both the regular minutes and the executive session.
Uh, we're not doing the executive session.
Oh, we're not, okay. Set a motion, do you approve it in hold?
Yeah.
I'll speak.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, so let's go with June 7th, our regular meeting first. So, you read them, you're all set?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. Okay, and then the executive session. I entertain a motion to accept those, but to hold.
So moved.
Further discussion? Go ahead, ask me what's in them. Nope. All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. All right, and moving on, this evening Sheri is here to talk to us about reducing the term limits and membership for the REIT committee. Want to explain to everyone what you're thinking?
Sheri, I'm the Recreation Director. It has become difficult over my two years here, and I know previously when Kristen Dietl was the Recreation Director, to get the seven-member board for the Recreation, which a seven-member board needs a quorum of four. We have a very difficult time hitting that quorum of four when you have five members. It just needs one person to be unable to attend a meeting, so not a lot of business gets done. So that's why we would like to reduce the members to five, so we would have a quorum of three. Currently, the term limits are five years, which I think is a lot for people to commit to. I think possibly if we reduce them to a three-year term, we would have more people inclined to join the committee.
Kirsten?
Questions?
Any answers?
I would make a motion that we reduce the term limits for the REIT committee to five, to three years and five members.
I agree. I think, you know, I know personally that it's difficult to grab enough people, and five years is a long commitment, you know? Even though you tell people, well, you can resign, you know, if it's not a fit, and yet nobody wants to commit to something and then say, yeah, no. So, I agree, and I would second the motion to reduce the membership for Recreation to five members, and to reduce the term limit to three years versus five years. Any further discussion? Any input, Mr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. King?
Sounds appropriate.
Really? Okay. Kama?
Wilson?
All right.
Newman, I.
All right. Cranston, I.
Thank you.
Sheri, so who is, uh, who would be off at this point? Do you know yet?
We actually, in January, we did have seven members, and since then, we've lost two. So we are currently at five.
Okay.
Which is what kind of prompted this conversation.
All right. All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
You still looking, Mr. King?
I am always looking.
What are you looking for? As long as we're on committees and boards and all that.
We do have one volunteer that has put in an application for the Finance Committee, Mark Garthier. We will be talking, I'll be talking to Mark over the summer. We're going to be convening again in early September, and we'll take up his appointment with the Select Board and the moderator at that point.
Okay.
So we're fortunate to have one volunteer. I'm still...
What else do you need? So is that for the finance, or?
That's for finance, and we'll still end up being too short.
Too short on finance?
Uh, no, one short on that, and three short currently on Capital Budget Committee.
Okay. All right, do you hear that, folks? Put in your applications for volunteering for the Finance Committee. Mark, I think, will be a good addition.
I think so, too.
Wait. Did you bribe him with something? Did you bribe him with something?
I think Lynn did.
All righty. Next thing on our agenda is our reappointments. So these are all, all of the people that have agreed to jump back on to any committee or board that they were on, a committee actually. So, do you have any objections to any of them?
No, I've looked them over, I'm familiar with probably 98% of the names, so I would gladly make a motion to reappoint all those listed as written.
I would second that. Any further discussion? So moved. All right. And then, next. We have an appointment for Matt Stelmac, who is the new, he's not coming in, is he, either of these gentlemen? Matt Stelmac and Chuck Goss to the Energy Commission. So Matt, as you know, is the manager over at Sterling Municipal Light Department now, and Chuck is our new facilities manager. Not unusual for the two of them to be on the Energy Commission, especially Matt, so... Any questions on that?
I would make a motion that we appoint Matt Stelmac and Chuck Goss to the Energy Committee.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. And then, uh, man, we're going to be out of here quick. We have the taking of Primrose Lane. We did already vote on this, but we signed off on it.
Yeah, just needs to be a vote, vote on the board, that we are authorizing the order of taking, so that that becomes accepted.
Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion for the order of taking for Primrose Lane.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. Okay, so that's that. And I guess the explanation is that we actually did look at it and authorize it, but we didn't take a formal vote on it. So, that's it. In common, you need us to sign off on it, or we actually already signed off on it? Okay. And now, somebody wants to talk about July 3rd closure for the Town Hall, I assume?
Yep, so for the nine-union folks, so it come up in our small-town administrators and managers groups what folks were doing. The holiday falls on a Tuesday, so we did a little poll of folks to use their time and close Monday to make it a longer weekend for those, instead of coming in, taking a day off and coming back. So I don't think we had anyone disinterested yet.
So what, they're taking a vacation day, or?
Personal vacation type.
Our personal day?
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
No, I already spoke to Bill, just wanted to make sure that all the employees were on board, and seems like they are, so I would make a motion that we have Town Hall be closed on July 3rd.
I guess my question would be, what do we do next year?
What's it fall on?
Wednesday.
That's it? Oh, it's just a day off in the middle of the week.
Okay, it's different, then.
Yeah.
All right.
If it fell on a Thursday, I'd say maybe we should close Friday.
You're a sad, sad man. But anyway, okay, so I would entertain a motion that we have staff, and this is all staff, right? I mean, we're Library, DPW...
COA, DPW, yep.
Sterling Light, et cetera.
Oh, that's Sterling Light, that's their decision.
Okay, all right. So that we will be closed July 3rd to the public, and the employees will take either a personal or a vacation day to make up for that.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. I do have another, goes along with our next meeting, I believe is on July 5th.
Yep.
Do we have anything going on, comma, on that agenda yet?
I don't.
Anything pressing?
Anything pressing, no.
Yes. Okay, so I would, I would not be opposed to July 5th not doing a meeting that night. Ordinarily during July and August, it's pretty quiet, so if something comes up, that's one thing, but how do you feel about it?
I mean, I'm fine either way. If something comes up, I'm happy to be available.
Yeah, pretty much, I am too. I mean, I, it just, like, tonight, we all dragged our stuff down here, and it's already, you know, we're going to probably be out of here in another 10, 15 minutes at the most. And that'll happen on July 5th, I'm sure. Some people will be away on vacation, nobody's going to care. What are you going to do, Mr. King, if we don't have a meeting on July 5th? Are you going to be all right?
I don't know. I mean, we'll all survive, we're going to work.
Mr. Mackey?
I'm going to be all right.
Yeah, you're not even going to be in town, are you? No.
No.
All right, so we'll just look at what we have coming up, and if there is nothing pressing, then we will just put it off to our next meeting later in July. Okay? We'll let David know. All right, and then we have the, you want to talk about the Favorment situation, or the?
Sure, we had gotten into agreement with a different company to do the renderings of downtown, should they basically become painted white, similar to some of the other colonial buildings. That original agreement didn't really work out, so we do have a new proposal from Favorment, who did the wayfinding signage for downtown. This blue one out here, the Welcome to Sterling sign on the front common of this building. Be the same amount of money, and just get those renderings ASAP to make up for the time that we missed previously.
Right, my understanding is that we'd have to sign off on this by July, June 30th, which is Friday?
Yeah, we can't prepay for work, so...
No. And the other thing people should know is that we did not spend any of the money on the former people that we're going to do at HD Solutions, I think it was?
Something like that.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion that we do transfer the funds of $3,050 for the EDC for storefront facade design and renderings with Favorment Design.
So moved.
Did you have any questions on that?
It looks good, and it looks like they're, want to keep with the historic look of the town, so I think that'll be important for everybody, and hopefully it all comes out the way we want it to.
Yeah, and this is just a rendering?
Right.
And the whole idea behind it is so that the EDC can go to the business owners and say, this is what we'd like it to look like, and do you want to play, basically? Is that about it, Mr. Mackey?
That's it.
Okay. And then, so all those in favor?
Newman, I.
Cranston, I. All right, you want to give a little TA update?
Sure. We have about a week left in the fiscal year for any, you know, financial and other things that are going on, obviously, then the new fiscal year begins, which means we have a whole host of different capital items that are going to start popping up fairly soon. It also means some of the grants that we have, one in particular is coming to a close, and that is the Beach Grant. If you've been down there, we do have the pad installed outside of the bathrooms. DPW did a great job grading that off. We do have the countertops and sinks installed, a couple other pieces of hardware, new doors, so we're going to try and get a couple more things done in the next week or so to finish up that grant and get those items submitted for reimbursement. Peg's Pond, a major construction, has been completed, the ADA path. I've ordered the benches and the picnic tables. We did add the path to the Council on Aging Building Senior Center as part of it, so hopefully it looks pretty good. As part of this, we coordinated with SMLD, who put in new electric service in so that we can work on the pumps, and maybe get a fountain in there again to keep the water agitated enough to not have the algae that we're having a problem with currently. So, we are back up and running on the pumps, so hopefully that mitigates some of it, and then if we can keep the water agitated, that's going to be a big portion of it. Finalizing the paperwork and the payment for the roof here, that's just about done. We met recently with the flooring company for the school, they're going to get started right after the 4th of July holiday with their demo work, and get that done hopefully by the end of July or so, for the school year to get rolling after Labor Day. And then, we do have the same contractor that did the windows in the basement finishing up the last three that didn't get done, and then the windows, that funding that got approved at Town Meeting, we'll get that quoted out, see where we stand for at least the front side of the building, how far that gets us, and a few other projects that we have going on. Those are the big items at this point.
All right. Kirsten, you have anything?
Nope.
No thoughts? No questions? All set? Okay. All right, well, just FYI, if you remember our last meeting, the room was full, and it was all about the new striping of the parking downtown, which we have discussed ad nauseam, actually, but I did tell people that we would have a meeting to attempt to find some, at least short-term solutions regarding the parking downtown. So at the meeting was the Director of Village Green, Andrew from MS Cafe, Police, Fire, DPW, myself, and Bill. I think that was it. So we did address the Village Green and parental drop-off, and shared some input that people had sent to us. For instance, parents leave on their flashes in front of the school to indicate that they're dropping off a child. Staggering arrival and dismissal times, like, instead of just waiting till 9 o'clock, have drop-off be from 8:45 to 9:15, or have an attendant meet parents at the curb and escort the children in. And putting a sign up at the Coming Down Meeting House Hill Road, which would say, you know, slow school zone for them. So Ryan is looking into that from the DPW. And we totally understand where people are coming from, that it's not that convenient to cross here, or even that safe, but we also understand that it's a, it's an issue that's been better than 40 years old at this point. And how do I know that? Because my kid was the first graduating class from there, and I parked down here. Downtown businesses, you know, increasing some municipal parking signage, and that, Ryan was going to take that on. And especially spaces like the ones across from the Sterling Light Department, you know, there's five spaces there, can we put up a sign? And Ryan said, yes, you know, park between the signs is allowed. Andrew also had a great idea for his customer base. He actually has a drone, that he went over the parking, and he put it on his website. Here are the different places to park for MS Cafe, or downtown. And we all agreed increasing the usage of the Town Hall parking lot for the employees and the business owners makes sense as far as leaving the front and the sides for Town Hall business and customers. Request for increased police presence for speeding, that was a big deal for all three entities, the school, the businesses, and, and the church. The church, we reassured them that funerals would not be affected, their Sunday closing meeting house would not be affected, the town could look into making the other space in front of the church, another handicap spot. Community lunch, it's the first Saturday of the month, we can either move the Sterling Street Market, or ask them not to have it on the first Saturday of the month. It's not to be affected anyway for a couple, I think, July and August, so it'd be September and October. Again, police monitoring speed, parking at the Town Hall for events and services. And then, you know, there was a concern about the community theater and the auctions, et cetera, and so on, and really, just as you would in any other community, you do a drop-off and then you move your car. I mean, you go into any other town that has the parking issues, which we all have, everybody has them, or they'll tell you that. So, you know, and working on that, and just really communication with that. And the police agree there'd be more monitoring of speeds in the center, the sightlines will remain in place, that won't change, legal parking will be monitored, and with kindness. And then the DPW, they're going to do the signage for the parking in the school zone, looking at the plans again for potential additional crosswalks. And they do have the crosswalk signage for the center of the roads, except that they're not here yet, they're on order, so don't get hit by a car before then. The sightlines again will remain in place, they have agreed that they'll continue to clear the common as, as they go, or, you know, they usually do the sidewalk, but not, the church had asked for the sidewalk also that goes up to the sanctuary and to the crosswalk. And Ryan didn't see a problem with that. And the fire was just concerned that the fire in the sight lanes for safety remain in place. And the bottom line on it was, like, keep the communication open as we move forward, and, you know, we discussed a little bit about the bigger plan, and how that was available for people to see on the website. It's not written in stone as of yet. Parking, yes, but some of the changes that can be made, for instance, the front here, cutting a piece of the front off of the Butrick Building, and adding, making the street wider, and adding parking there. I mean, there is a future to have additional parking, it's just not going to happen tomorrow. So in the meantime, you know, people have to take some responsibility for themselves and stay safe, so. So that's kind of a recap of the meeting we had with everybody. Everybody was cordial, kind, listened, understood, and now we move forward. And like we said, you know, next time, we'll knock on your door and say, hey, they're digging up the road, don't forget. All right? Anything I missed on that?
Great summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyway, so other than that, not much as far as PSAs. Beach?
We have the new beach stickers.
New beach stickers are in?
Yep, you can get them down at the beach after 12, as long as you are a property owner in Sterling with your Sterling address on your registration. If you rent, you still get a free pass, but you just need to come into my office with your rental agreement, registration, and the utility bill.
And do we want to talk about dogs?
I love them, they're adorable. I have two of my own, but they are not allowed out on the beach, or on the grass park area there, not even down at the boat ramp. I did have a gentleman come in today with his dog, and he was putting him on his paddleboard and going out for a ride, so obviously the dog is allowed on property, but they cannot stay.
Any other things people should be aware of, now that your beach is open?
If the trash receptacle is full, take your trash with you. I'm doing my best to get the trash barrels out there. We do not put all of the trash barrels out at once because they will get filled up overnight. So I do bring them out as they are needed, so if for some reason there was a lot of trash that day and that receptacle is full, just take it with you.
Yeah, well, that's kind of a rule of thumb at some of our ballfields, too. You bring it in, you take it out.
Right.
So, okay, not, not too harsh. All right, and then, your concerts start?
They start July 10th, on Mondays and Wednesdays, and they go through August 21st.
All right, everybody get that? Get your chairs ready. Right? Anything else, Mr. Mackey?
No.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Okay, you don't want to tell the general public about the new bus route that's coming to town?
Would you like me to tell people?
That would be great.
Thank you, Chairman. Cranston, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. The... Have you introduced yourself, sir?
No, first he's got to give me a bad time, and then he'll introduce himself.
All right, what we have is a new opportunity in town to transport people around, that's being sponsored by MART. It's basically a door-to-door service. There are three communities involved in this pilot project for this year. The project will get kicked off on July 5th. What people do is to call MART, they schedule a ride from A to B, wherever it is. The, there are three zones, and the zones are priced pretty modestly, it's a highly subsidized program. The cost for a one-way trip in the smallest geographic area, which is about 10 miles, is $3, and then it goes up to $5 for approximately a 20-mile trip. People who are conducting the service will be under the watchful eyes of MART, and they will be cab and, taxi and livery service providers from this general area. So, it's a very economical kind of program. It will allow some people who don't have transportation to get to work, others to get to the train station in Leominster. The Senior Center, of course, will still have its two vans that will move seniors and those with disabilities around, but this will give many more options to people in Sterling, and obviously I want to encourage people to take part in it. Like most brand-new programs, I'm sure that there will be a few adjustments along the way at the very beginning, but I'm really confident about being able to provide more options in the city and beyond the city, up beyond the town, I should say, for residents of Sterling. The three communities are Lunenburg, Lancaster, and Sterling that are part of this pilot project.
And there's no age involved in it at all?
No, it's all ages, all abilities.
Yep.
And that includes young people who might have to go somewhere, or might want to go somewhere within the town. $3 on a one-way trip isn't unreasonable. The only issue that may be of some concern to people is that it's not pick up the phone and call them, and now they'll show up, you have to call them the day before.
All right. And this is all going to be outlined on our website, right?
It already is.
Okay, good.
It already is, yep.
All right. Anything else you'd like to share?
Are there any other questions that you'd like to ask? Very good. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for sharing. You're all set, Sheri?
I am, thank you.
Talked to us enough, and Mr. King, anything from you?
Just a brief follow-up, I know there's only two more school days left, but prior to our other parking meeting, we had another meeting that talked about parking on Bootell Road. Has that abated? Has anything been accomplished on that?
Little bit, but not completely, so it's got to be something that we work on as we move forward with the principal there and Sean, and try to come up with a plan, you know? At one point, somebody suggested, you know, making Bootell one-way from Muddy Pond, you know, during the school hours. So, nothing has been firm up on that. Definitely needs to be done before, you know, they start sending the letters out to the students, so parents are well aware of how it goes. But I understand that you want it to be one of the monitors, though, as far as escorting the children.
I go, I go by frequently and monitor the traffic.
But see, my first thing on that would be, why would you do that unless you were picking up a child? You know, but, but yeah, nothing's been firmed up on that as of yet. All set, Bill?
All set.
All set.
Kama? Kirsten?
All set.
You're not really all set, because I'm the one who want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All right, let's go. All those in favor?
You and I.
Krantz and I? Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Richard, have a great vacation.